Well, good morning or good afternoon and welcome to the January 23rd, 2025 meeting of the Board of Library Trustees and a special welcome to our newest member of the Board of Trustees, Councilman Freistroffer.
Thank you.
Councilman Freistroffer was appointed by the County Council to represent the interests of the community. Let's begin with a roll call and we'll start with Tom Freistroffer.
President.
Paul Moss.
President.
Jim Williams.
President.
Marty Seifer.
I'm here.
And I'm here also, so that's five of us. So we have a quorum. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for the Finance Committee.
So moved.
And a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. We'll turn to item three and are up.
Thank you, Ben. And just for clarity, this is the Board of Finance, not the Finance Committee for the official record. So, yeah, this takes place each year at this time. We discuss how the funds of the library were invested over the year and as we've done the last few years, we have had these in money market funds. We had another excellent year with investments. We gained over, in your packet is a special grouping of charts and graphs that show over 10 years how we've done on investments. You can see 2024 was a very good year. The Fed had continued to keep rates high for fighting inflation, which benefits us for our deposits. Always good to have the interest rates high for that type of thing because as you recall from prior reports, we are very limited in what we can invest in. It's not like you can take tax or proceeds, government monies, and invest them in equities or anything like that, like we do, let's say with the foundation. We are limited. So having that kind of return, I tend to follow what the county treasurer does and they utilize these same instruments. Mainly, our funds are in, as you can see, the Lake City Investor Money Market Fund. That had an average rate for 2024 of 5.61%. And then we also have money in the STAR Savings, the mutual fund there. That was averaging 4.8. Again, we, that, the STAR fund is our operating accounts. That's where all the bills and checks are paid out of, the payroll and things like that. So we have to keep money in there. But we try to keep everything invested as much as possible. And as the graphs will show, again, we earned about 2.7 million last year with the average yield of around 5%. The invested amount, we again kept that higher than in the past. 97.29 is what I had, all of our funds invested most of the time. There's only a small amount I don't have invested and those roll in and roll out to pay the bills. Part of the reason why we still keep it in STAR again is we do not, if you recall, do any short-term borrowing. There's no tax anticipation warrants that we utilize. We utilize the cash on hand and that allows us to save on any of the interest rates that we were interested, we'd have to pay for those borrowings. Because, and with property tax accounting for over 75% of our revenue stream, you have to fund those operations because your property tax doesn't get distributed until the first distribution in May and then following up in June and then again in November, December. So there's always that cash flowing that has to take place. But even given that, we try to keep everything as invested as possible. And as you can see from the charts, we had quite a good year. And, you know, right now, the Fed is lowering rates. We've seen that hit the accounts. Currently there, you know, from my report, you can see they're at 4.94 in the Lake City, 4.47 in the STAR. They were higher. But, you know, overall, we had a very good year. The interest earnings are always a very helpful, they've been instrumental in building up our reserves for our capital fund that we will be using as we move forward into the phases of that. So, but, my usual long-winded short story, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you'd have.
Questions of our treasurer, Chief Financial Officer. I have one. There is a significant rate difference. Why are we spreading it among the two?
The two, again, the STAR is what funds operations. And so we have, I have to keep roughly 13 million in that account in order to get us through from January to April. Or I should say, May, when we get our first tax distribution. We did make another, I believe, $5 to $6 million investment, moving it from STAR into Lake City. And we try to keep as much into that as possible. Now, as you notice, rates are coming down a little bit and those two got, are getting closer. STAR is starting to meet, 4.8 versus 5.6, still significant. We still have 38 million versus 16. But our operations require about 14 to 16 million from those first five months and then again July to November.
But if they were all kept in Lake City, is there any stricture that says that couldn't be the operating?
No, in fact, one of the things I've talked to Jill about is it's about time for us to do a RFP for bank services. And I know Lake City will be anxious to want to bid on that. So we may move the operating accounts over to Lake City. But that'll be done with an official RFP.
Yeah. It just seems that delta is so great and the amount that we invest is so great. Even a tenth of a percent.
That balance this past year went down to, I think, a low of around 3 to 4 million. Again, it gets reduced down to, yeah, yeah. Yeah, if you, if you saw a chart of that usage, it'll drop. And then because it's 1231, we had the last tax payment that came into that account. So on that day, that snapshot, that had a lot more money in it.
But nothing would prohibit us to have all the money invested in the highest yielding instrument?
No, no. Not at all. And we do continue to look for other instruments, like the CDs. I think in the report, I included the current CD rates. Quite frankly, they're not as good as what we're getting on the money market and you would have to tie the funds up for at least 24 months. So I don't like to, I'd rather keep it liquid.
When I was traveling in, I was listening to NPR and the segment was on Bitcoin. And a subset of that is the coin that President Trump issued. That seems to be going like crazy, so we might want to consider that.
Yeah, if you can convince the state legislature to allow that as an investment.
Hey, it's a bunch of Republicans.
That's right, yeah. I'm surprised. Maybe, maybe it's already changed, who knows?
Okay, God bless America.
I know, I know.
So the main issue is the liquidity of the STAR account. Am I, do you want to boil it down to?
Yeah, those really are cash flow funds. Those are the ones that are cash flowing operations.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn the Board of Finance meeting.
So moved.
Well, I think you'd want to accept the report.
Oh, I thought we did, okay. Motion to accept the report.
I will move to accept the report.
And a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, aye. Opposed by nay. Now we'll adjourn the meeting and go into our regular board meeting. The roll call stays the same. No one has left. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Moved.
And a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay, thank you. If there are no objections, I'd like to group the approval of the following minutes. Minutes of the regular session, December 19th, 2024. Minutes of the executive session, December 19th, 2024. Minutes of Capital Projects Committee Executive Session, January 13th, 2025. And the minutes of approval of claims, January 9th, 2025. May I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay, thank you. And we'll move back to you, David.
All right, thank you. And in your packet, of course, is your financial report, the various spreadsheets as well as charts. Being the December report, the main items to report now, as we've started the year-end process, these are preliminary reports. They will be having a number of adjustments. That'll happen over the next few weeks as we bring in the closing entries, a lot of them having to do with converting our statements from basically cash basis to accrual basis. A lot of large entries get made for the booking upcoming tax receipts that will be coming in '25 and having those go in. So while these will be pretty much set, we, Jill and I will be working, you know, forward in getting the various reports ready, the, you know, library annual report, the state library reports, the financial sections there, as well as getting the statements ready for the annual comprehensive financial report that will be audited. And speaking of that, after these were sent out, I got notice from GFOA that we did once again win the Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting. This will be our 32nd year that we've received that and so very proud of that. Thank you, thank you. Yeah, but it's, it's not just me, it's Jill who's more, you know, responsible and the entire finance teams and also. But it was great to get that. It's, you know, go out on a, on a high note and everything, so. But, you know, really, I think some of the highlights of the year, we ended up closing the year in the general fund, 2.25 million in surplus. Lot of that was due to the excess earnings. Again, we had budgeted 1.5 million, we ended up getting 2.7. We had, again this year, supplemental LIT, I've talked about that before, that was a $950,000 addition. As well as we continue to do very, very well in our self-insurance fund. As you may recall, I've talked before, that last year, we set up a budget 424 and then decided to cut back on the amount of funds being added to the self-insurance fund from the general fund, on recommendation from our auditors, because the balances were just getting too high. And we've had great success. Our health insurance claims continue to be beating the estimates of our reinsurers. The, they would, they were anticipating $3.4 million of claims. We ended up a little over, well, right now, unadjusted, about 2.5 million in claims, which is fantastic compared to industry standards. So we were able to cut back on the amount flowing out of the general fund into the self-insurance fund and that generated almost 870,000 of that 2.2 surplus. So we were able to add the 2.25 as part of the reserves. Again, that will be earmarked for the Facility Master Plan and the Capital Improvement Plans in order to meet those obligations. I think those are the main highlights. We're going to be doing the encumbrances, the carryover encumbrance. That's one of the standard end-of-year items that allows us to take the '24 appropriation and utilize that, bring it forward into 2025 to pay for these commitments that were made in '24. So Jill will talk a little bit about that when it's proposed, but that's what the purpose of that resolution is. But that's all I really have to say right now, but I'd be glad to entertain any questions.
Questions?
Dave, first, congratulations on the caffè.
Thanks.
Jill, I hope another 32 years.
If she's here 32 years.
Yeah, we're in trouble.
On the self-insurance front and the funding, we spent a lot of time on that in the past few years, just kind of go over that, adjustments to rates and everything. How do you think this news will affect that, I guess, for next year? Is it, if we stay the same, are we going to be able to put more in reserves? Are we going to be able to, are we going to change anything on the insurance, do you think?
Well, honestly, I was just talking with Jill earlier this week and, and we were, usually at this time, we decide, all right, I've put in a budget of X and it's got to cover everything from non, you know, group insurance, so dental, you know, vision, all those type of insurance, the wellness programs, things like that. So we subtract all that and we were coming down with, do we continue? We, we cut down, we were going to need 325,000 a year, or per month, per month to go into that fund. We kept it then at 301, 424. Honestly, we're talking about the potential of moving that down to 250 a month, which would, again, another significant amount that won't be coming from the general fund. We are seeing, and obviously, we rely on Gibson, our insurance consultants, to say, okay, where are we? You know, I know what the reinsurance is saying our claims will be, but how do you feel? And after comparing, one of the things, Marty, that we've seen is, when we first started this self-insurance fund, not to be mean, but we had a much older employee base at that point. We have a much younger, our average age has been going down. That turns into less draws on the claims. Because if you remember, like you know, the, the big hitters are the, the back surgeries, the cancer situations, heart issues, things like that. Those tend to be following, as we age, they become more prevalent. We are not seeing like any of those. We have not seen any lasers, they call lasers.
No lasers this year?
No, none. Plus, going in with that Pareto, if you remember what Alan had talked about, the Pareto Group, basically it's pool. We will not see lasers any longer and our rates will likely, our contribution rates to that will go down. So honestly.
I'm sorry.
No.
I was going to say, we are also seeing the long-term payouts of our wellness program and the investment.
Precisely, precisely. I mean, some of you were here when Kathy Fleck started that wellness program. We were told then, you will not see a change from year to year. It's the 10 years that you'll see these wellness initiatives bear fruit because people are more healthy, they are taking care of themselves, you're allowing them to exercise and do the things that.
It builds a culture of health and wellness.
I couldn't have said it better, you know. The number, and Jill would know better than I, but the number of people who take advantage of those wellness initiatives that, you know, pay them for doing and performing is, is amazing. So, yeah, and it's a direct correlation to how well our, our insurance fund does.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure.
Any additional questions? Approval, I will, a motion to accept the financial report.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye, please.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Now we go to the approval of the claims.
I'm going to let.
I have the claims today and we have claims of just a little over 1.8 million, which the high dollars, actually, speaking of self-insurance, 250,000 of that, as we said, we'd lowered that amount. As one of them, as you look outside, snow removal, tops another, another 178,000. And non-print materials make up about another 103 of that. So that really totals about 827 of that 1.1 million of a high dollar amount of that total. So that's where we're standing, where claims for right now.
Jill, what was the amount for snow removal? And that was for last, what period of time?
This probably would have been, this is all of '25 right now, so the whole month of January, probably, for all the branches.
And we haven't had much snow.
So it'd probably been a lot of the ice and salt.
Ice, so.
Yeah.
Cost of, salt is extremely high. It ends up almost costing the same as the labor for the plowing.
No kidding?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we have any questions?
We'll pass it around and have a motion, please, to accept the claims as presented.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
And opposed by nay. Now we're carrying forward encumbrances.
I'll let Jill do that one last.
Okay, we have, you want to take the claims?
Okay.
We have total amount of carryover encumbrances for 2025, just a little over 2 million, which of the general fund make up 1.9 of that and of the library general fund and just a little over 80,000 of that come out of the general, library gift fund, I'm sorry. Of that 1.9 is, the, 1.4 of that actually comes from the solar and chiller project. And the rest is pretty much our Duncan remodel, which is coming to our new studio, is about 115,000. So the bulk of those two projects are capital, so they're making up 1.6 of that, 1.9 million are coming from those projects. So there's where a lot of that rollover is coming from those and the library materials are making up another 324,000 invoices that we're expecting to get for 2025. Anybody else have any questions or concerns? Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion then to approve the Resolution 2025-01 to carry forward certain encumbrances to 2025.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay, thank you. Now we have Marty and Capital Projects.
All right, not a huge report. I'm sorry, I missed the last meeting where we announced the County Council had passed our bond resolution that we had proposed, five to two. So the committee has met, met on January 13, kind of an outline of where we are, how to move forward. But the next major step is taking this to the City Council. I believe that is scheduled for Tuesday, January 28. At what time, folks?
5:30.
At 5:30 at the regular, at the City Council meeting. Those listening and everybody are urged, if you have something to say, please be there and, and say it for the City Council. But it is going to be on the bond issue for approval as well. And that is Tuesday, January 28 at 5:30 at the City Council meeting, regular meeting time, place and time. And that's all I have.
Any questions on Capital Projects' report? Okay. Well, we're down to you, Susan.
We are, thank you, Ben. Well, I have a written report and I'll share some from it. You've caught me in a little fib in this written report because I start out with, more than 5,300 Allen County children are currently enrolled in Dolly Parton's Imagination Library. That would be 5,500 as of about a half hour ago. In December, our program was the fastest-growing Dolly Parton Imagination Library affiliate in the entire United States.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you so much. A big congratulations goes to Aja and our marketing team because they did an extraordinary job of getting the word out. Elena and I see all the registrations as they come in and it just truly warms every corner of my heart to see children sign up, particularly, we have children who were born in January '25, just day-old babies who are signing up for this program, who will get 60 months' worth of free books coming. So we're just so grateful for the support of the Allen County Public Library Foundation. It has grown exponentially. We knew it would be popular, but we didn't realize that it would be so popular so quickly. When we originally had our conversations with the State Library and the Imagination Library people, they thought we would be at where we are now within a year of our program and we got there in three months. So that just shows the extraordinary demand and interest in this program. It also shows that our library foundation will continue to fundraise and fundraise aggressively and robustly to make sure that we can meet the demand, but it's, it's thrilling. But speaking.
You know, it would, it would be an interesting correlation to see whether children at early, I think, that get books that are read to, it's done somewhere else, but whether we have improved the reading skills of those that have participated in the program.
That is a very good question and I do know that the Dollywood Foundation has published several white papers on that and they have found that, yes, the research shows that the children who participate in this program come to school better prepared to learn to read and teachers have so many good things to say about the students they see who have been in this program for their first five years of life.
Good.
Yep. Speaking of fundraising, there will be a second annual night at the library, the joint fundraiser with the Literacy Alliance and the Friends of the Library. So some of you were there last year and it was a pretty remarkable event. We have a big event planned for this year as well, so please save the date for Saturday, May 10. More information will be forthcoming. One of our biggest programs, highly demanded programs of the year, it's starting in just a few days. It is free tax help from AARP Tax Aid Volunteers. It starts on January 27th, it goes right through Tax Day, April 15th, at nine of our ACPL locations, including right here at the main library. It is available by appointment only and appointments can be made by calling the preferred branch and we are already taking appointments, even though the program doesn't start itself until the 27th. But it's always very, very appreciated and well-received. Jill mentioned some of the expenses regarding the studio and the construction there. So we are heading into the tail end. If you peeked into the former Dunkin' Donuts space, as you walked in today, you see the buzz of activity, the grand opening of the studio, which is our newly reimagined and expanded Makerspace, will be February 11th at 1:00 PM here and we hope you can attend. Kim Boland, Aja, Michael Keller and I will be at the Indiana Library Federation State House Day on February 3rd to meet with legislators to advocate for libraries and we will be there with a few hundred other library and library supporters and staff from around the state. Some issues we'll be talking about will be continued support of the Dolly Parton's Imagination Library. You may remember that all programs in Indiana get a 50% match from the state. We truly could not afford to sustain this program without that 50% match, so we want to ensure that it is going to be carried out for years to come. Also, I'm guessing that we'll probably have conversations about Senate Bill 283. And I mention it today because it has hit some of the statewide news channels. You have seen an article in the online version of the Journal Gazette about it. It is a Senate bill that was introduced that would change the fiscal and governing structure of public libraries from library-appointed boards, as you are, to county government. There was a hearing on this in the Tax and Fiscal Policy Committee earlier this week. No one showed up to testify in support of the bill. There were librarians across the state who testified against it and it did not come to a vote at that point. It's something we're watching with concern. The Indiana Library Federation does not think this is a sound bill. They believe that there is already more than ample government oversight of library boards with the county and the city in our case when it comes to appropriations and taking on debt. So we'll be watching that closely and reporting out as we learn more. I have excerpted here a column that was in the Journal Gazette back on the 15th by Jesse Cortezzi, who is one of our senior Lincoln librarians. It is about a new temporary exhibit that you can check out today in the Roland Center and it is called "The United States Colored Troops." And you can read more about the exhibit and its significance and it will be here for several weeks. And speaking of exhibits, there's another exhibit that I encourage you to check out that has been covered some in local media. It's on the main floor of our great hall. It is an exhibit highlighting the history of housing discrimination and it aims to draw attention to the intersection of housing discrimination and racism throughout history and it does that through historical. And it does that through historical documents, news, news stories, and QR codes. And it is done in partnership with the Fair Housing Authority, so we encourage you to take a look at that. It will be on display in the Great Hall through April. And also, this is always a fan and board favorite, we have our quarterly managers' report that I encourage you to take a look at, because it is full of tremendous information about the work that across the system has been completed this past quarter. A few things I wanted to bring to your attention, on page seven of the report, there is a mention from our Grayble Branch Manager, Rebecca Wolf, on presentations she has given nationwide, virtually, on library programming for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. She has spoken to the board before. You may remember that she is truly a national thought leader and innovator when it comes to developing programs for adults and their caregivers, adults with intellectual disabilities. So she is very highly on-demand in the speaker circuit across the country, sharing her best practices and what she has learned working here in Allen County with the nation. So we're really proud of the influence that she has had in the space, and her work and the work that's happening here in Allen County has really encouraged public libraries across the country to be more inclusive with their programming, to really engage with audiences of adults with intellectual disabilities. So we're very proud of her.
Have we thought of asking for some funds from AWS to sponsor some of these types of programs?
We absolutely could do that. We have received AWS funds for other programs that serve people with disabilities, but this would be a great match as well, absolutely.
I agree. I also wanted to share on page 23, a wonderful collaboration between the Genealogy Center, our Communications Department, and our System Services Circulation Department. We've introduced a new library card. It's quite pretty. I will pass it around for you to take a look at. It's a new genealogy library card for our numerous national and international patrons of the Genealogy Center. This card will allow users to create accounts within our system, maintain reading lists in our catalog, and access our PC reservation and print copy systems. And it will significantly benefit the library by providing a new method to track the use of our collections and services, and to communicate with our national and global patrons. So although it doesn't allow you to check out materials from the library, it does allow you to use all the assets that many of our traveling genealogy patrons appreciate from
And that's all I have for my director's report.
Well, it's a very positive one, and that's great. Any questions of Susan? Are there any items of new business that should come before this body? Any old business that we might have forgotten? How about public comment? I see, would you like to comment?
I'm just acknowledging.
Okay, great. How about anybody, nobody over the airwaves? Well, all that being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. And second, all those in favor, aye? Opposed by nay? And let me remind you, shortly after this meeting adjourns, we have an executive session.
Thank you.
Thank you.